Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of Education Work Session. Please stand and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Dr. King, would you like to begin your presentation?
Absolutely. So, the presentation really is going to be led by Ms. Landgraf, but we just wanted to, and of course, this is subject to any input, any and all input from you. We put together some information that we think will be useful for the discussion. So, we included some information from the county's budget. We included some information in how we allocate our own funds and what funds we have. And we also included some requests, so, and not very many. So, we can talk about priorities and that kind of thing. So, without a lot of further ado, we're going to have Ms. Landgraf get started. But we also, I just wanted to remind you about the folder of sort of background information that we sent you. So, five-year trends, that kind of data was in there, just so that you can reference that anytime you need that. And as we have this discussion today of there are other documents that we need to pop into that folder, then we'll do that, just so that you have resources at your fingertips as we talk about these things.
And thank you for that coming so ahead of the game. It gave us a lot of time to really ponder it.
So, that's no day, you know, helped us to think about things a little bit. So, great. Thank you, Ms. Landgraf.
Okay. This is a budget workshop, so we do want your input. And please interrupt, ask questions, give us input anytime throughout this as we go along. Today, what we hope to give you is some background information on both the Board and the county, the county government funding allocations to us, some of our revenue projections, some of our expenditure projections, and then we've already given you some trend data as far as what we have spent in each of these categories over the last five years. So, we're going to start with county information. And this is the county, and this is a slide of what the county's current budget is. And you can see, this is a revenue, and approximately 49%, almost 50% of their budget comes from property taxes, and another 36% of it comes from, almost 37% of it comes from income taxes. So, that's where a majority of their money comes from. You've got recreation taxes, other taxes, and some other small fees and whatnot that the county's able to fund their budget. As far as what that looks like for us, this is how the county allocates their budget. So, you can see, the largest piece here at the bottom is the Board of Education, and that's 41.48% of their budget. The next largest piece is public safety, and then you go to debt service, you've got public works, you've got the general government. My point in showing you this slide is, the Board of Education's 41% of the county budget. If you look at where we were 10 years ago, we were at, this is now, 10 years ago, we were 46% of their budget. And then if you look at where we were 15 years ago, we were at 50% of their budget. So, we're losing, losing dollars, I guess you would say, we're losing percent of their budget. Over the last 15 years, you can see, back in 1997, 98, we were almost 55% of their budget. Over that same period, over the period of time, we are now down to 41% of their budget. So, we are losing our, how much of the county budget is coming to us. That's not to say that there aren't other things, public safety, you know, those types of things that shouldn't be getting a larger percent of their budget. But I think the 12% loss over a period of that many years is pretty significant for This is in terms of real dollars, and this basically is just a slide showing, this is the information that produced the slide that we just saw.
What year was it that we lost that the county went to taking care of our land instead of us, like the lawn mowing, you know, cutting grass and parking lot?
Ms. George, let me take a look at that. That's probably been about 10, 12, 15 years.
Okay, it's been a long, okay. I was just trying to see if it factored into, where it factored into that loss.
I'll look that up now.
Well, it doesn't really, because they still allocate that money to us, and it still shows as an expense on our budget.
Oh, it does?
Right. So, it's not really going to show that.
You said 12% in the last 10 years?
Since 97.
Since what year was that?
Oh, oh, here.
This was 1997, 98, so that was what, 20 years.
20 years.
Going down 12%.
So, we've lost 12% in 20 years.
But really, if you go over to 99, 2000, we stayed steady those two years, 97, 98, 99. We really didn't start losing out till 2000, and we lost almost every year there. In 2008 or '09, we had a little bit of an increase, dropped considerably, came back up around 45 three years ago, and steady dropping again. Big dropping.
Now, this, back in 2011, '12, if you remember, we got that 10% reduction in the allocation for the county.
It was 2011, '12? Why did I think it was around 2008?
It's 2011, '12.
Okay.
Is there any information on like state funding that made up for some of the 12% or also comparing that to the population growth of the students enrolled?
I can get you that information. I do not have that as a slide prepared for today.
Okay.
But did we generally have a steady decrease? We didn't have a steady decrease in students, though?
A few, a few, a few, a few. No big increases.
No large increases.
And our state funding really doesn't fluctuate like the county does, does it? The state funding and the federal funding is usually pretty across the board for all counties, depending on their size and their enrollment. It's a percentage of...
Because of the funding formula.
Right.
And really, back in, I'm going to say the early 2000s, when the Thornton funding kicked in, we got some increases in state funding, but it's been pretty consistent. We'll look at state funding here in a little bit.
But they don't give us extra state because we get less county.
No, no. The funding formula for the state is set, and basically, it's based on our enrollment. And then, in comparison to enrollment in other counties, it may fluctuate a little bit, but it is pretty, it's a set formula.
So, it's not a situation where the county looks at it like, well, you got a little more state funding, so we can cut back here this year?
Well, I'm not going to say no to that, because back in, when the Thornton funding first kicked in, we saw that around the state with a lot of the counties, where the state was then kicking in more money and the counties were backing off on what they were allocating to each of the counties. But overall, no, that's generally not the case. So, you'd like to see what the state funding increases over that same period of time have been?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand if there's some kind of trend where we see, perhaps, there's an explanation for the 12% decrease because we've seen an increase from state funding, or also, you know, the trends of what the population was for student enrollment in comparison to the 12% decrease. Just some kind of context for the trend, that's just what I was trying to understand.
I can do that. Okay. So, that was just the actual figures. And then we go on to what our operating budget looks like. Our operating budget, which was $90 million last year, 57% of our budget comes from the county, and then 35% of it comes from the state, and then we have some restricted money, which makes up another 6% or 7%, and they're all grants, and they're very restricted in how they can be used. And then there's a small little piece of the pie that comes from building use funds, interest income, tuition that we receive from other counties, those types of things. Here, in terms of real dollars, this is what it looks like for the current fiscal year. We're getting $55.5 million of our revenue is coming from the county. $34 million is coming from the state, and then we have $700,000 in other revenue. Now, I want to remind you that about 235 of that, I believe, is the figure, was money that we allocated out of our fund balance last year to make our budget balance. Restricted funds, we'd get about $4.8 million in federal, another $800,000 in state, and then other funds, which would be, like the family support center, these kinds of things would make up the additional requirement for you as part of those other funds. So, one of the questions that we get asked all the time is about maintenance of effort. And this is always a bone of contention, I would say, with the county governments, is there is a state law on the books that says the county government has to fund us at a certain level. And essentially, the way the funding works, they are required to fund us as much in the current year as they did in the prior year on a per pupil basis. So, if we have increasing enrollment, then they would have to fund us more. If we have the increasing enrollment, they would be allowed to fund us less. This is just a real basic, simple example, and to help everybody understand what this is all about. So, if we had 1,000 students and the county government gave us $7 million, that would be $7,000 per student. If next year we had 1,001 students, then they would have to give us $7,000 more dollars. So, that's the basic concept. In 2012, the state decided that they needed to add more teeth to the maintenance of effort law, and so they changed it a little bit. And now they have a condition that's called education effort, that in addition to just on a per pupil basis meeting that number, they also have to make the education effort. Education effort is they take the total wealth of the county, and they divide the appropriation given to the Board of Education by that figure, and they come up with a ratio. Our ratio for fiscal year 2018 was 1.23% of the wealth of the county. Overall, they then compare that to the state as a whole. The state's percent was 1.28. So, our percent for Queen Anne's County was less than what the state percent was. Therefore, we failed our education effort. When we fail the education effort, then they look at three different factors, and they say, okay, county government, you have to increase your maintenance of effort by a certain amount of money. And we're going to look at these three factors to determine which factor, and it's the lesser of the three factors, which, what the amount is that you have to increase your effort. So, it is the lesser of the increase in the county wealth, or the state wealth, or 2.5%, whichever is less. In fiscal year 2008, as I said, the county's percent was 1.23%, the state percent was 1.28. We failed to meet education effort. Therefore, the additional amount of maintenance of effort is going to be imposed, and the county's increase in wealth per pupil was 2.52%. The state increase was only 1.5%, and then comparison to the 2.5%. So, the state average is what they will have to increase their maintenance of effort. Then we go on to the actual calculation of maintenance of effort. We begin the calculation with the highest allocation for the 2018 school year, which was the $55.5 million. We divide that by our enrollment from last school year to come up with what a per pupil amount would be.
Is that the end of the school year or the beginning of the school year?
September 30th. There's, September 30th is when we give our official enrollment numbers.
Okay, okay.
And those are the numbers that the state uses when they put their formula together. So, we use the September 30th, 16 enrollment numbers to come up with what the per pupil appropriation would be. So, in this case, we took the $55.5 million, we divided it by our 7,462 and 1/4 students, and we came up with the per pupil amount was $7,436.80 per pupil. And now, because they have, this additional amount has been imposed upon them, we have to add another 1.5% to that figure. So, that brings our adjusted per pupil amount to $7,548.35 per pupil. That then gets multiplied by our current September 30th enrollment, and that, when you do that multiplication, that means that the required maintenance of effort for the fiscal year 2019 school year is $56,884,884,381, which is an increase in maintenance of effort of $1,389,120.
So, just to be clear, because this is a point that needs to be clarified.
Right.
While it is an increase from last year, it is still maintenance of effort. It's not something in addition to maintenance of effort.
The county doesn't see it that way, though?
But it is.
Right.
The commissioners never see it that way.
No, but it is.
Do they know about this? Do they know?
They know, because this was a situation last year.
Remember, that's what happened last year.
Right.
I mean, it's almost like the maintenance of effort this year is paying us for the shortfall from last year.
For the number of students, right, because it's the students between the 16 year and the 17.
Exactly, exactly. So, without anything in addition to MOE, we're really not getting new money. We're getting money that, had it been allocated correctly and a little better a year ago, maintenance of effort might have been different. Had they given us additional funding above MOE of $1.3 million, they would be at zero, really.
I'm not exactly sure how the numbers would work out.
Not really, because of the ratios and the formula, but...
But if they had, if they had met the education effort number, then yes, the allocation to us would have had to have been higher. Off the top of my head, I don't know how much higher it would have had to have been in order for them to meet that number. But then they wouldn't have the additional amount imposed upon them for the current year.
But we do hear this every year. What we give you today, we have to give you forever, and they don't like being caught in that.
Can it work in the opposite, though? Like, if we come, if they came in, so they came in over education effort, I mean, could that ever work against us? Or is it, they could never go back below what the former year's MOE?
If we had declining enrollment, then they could.
Okay.
If we were losing students, as long as they were giving us the same amount on a per pupil basis.
Gotcha, okay.
If we had less students, then they would be able to give us less. And you'll see, I think we have a slide in here that shows some of that, where there was a couple of years where we did have declining enrollment, and they were able to...
There are some counties that are really in trouble with that, continually losing enrollment.
Can.
They didn't give it to us last year, what was...
Right. And actually, the next slide.
Okay. I've got it.
I just want to understand, you mentioned the state poured more teeth into the maintenance of effort law. Do we know what happened to make, like, what was happening that made them do that?
Several counties across the state, and you'll see, actually, when we go to the next slide, you'll see we had a big dip in maintenance of effort. That was the year they cut us $4.5 million, and that was the only year that they didn't meet the maintenance of effort clause. There were several counties across the state that did that that year. And basically, there was no teeth in the law, and the county government said, okay, so we didn't meet maintenance of effort. What does that mean?
Yeah, there was no...
Right, there was no repercussions for it.
Was there some specific bill that was passed, where I need the language?
Yes, there was a bill that was passed in 2012 that changed the language and put some teeth behind it, because now, if the county government decides that they're not going to meet maintenance of effort, then the state will withhold their general funds and give them to the Board of Education to make up the difference.
Do we know what that bill number is? I could research it. I'm just curious to read the language. I'll go research it. We said it was 2012?
2012.
Okay, thank you.
I think if you do maintenance of effort, 2012 comes up.
It comes up.
The whole history does.
Yeah. I just want to research my own background on it. Thank you.
So, essentially, what I'm trying to show on this slide is, the yellow line here across the center marked the zero axis, that's our maintenance of effort. So, you can see, our county has actually funded us over maintenance of effort, with the exception of one, two years, and then one year, they funded us way below maintenance of effort, which was the year that we were cut the $4.5 million. In terms of real numbers, this is what it looked like. So, you can see, there was a third year here that they barely funded us over maintenance of effort. It was only a quarter of a percent over maintenance of effort, but they did fund over maintenance of effort. You can also see on this that the required maintenance of effort in some years was a decrease, and those were the years where we would have had declining enrollment. So, in this particular year, you see in 2011, they were actually able to fund us less than they had the year before, but the maintenance of effort was less. So, they gave us, in total dollars, less money, but they still met the maintenance of effort.
Which is, like, speaking of those sides you're involved in.
Okay, then last week, at the end of last week, I also received the funding projections for next year from the state. So, for each of the different programs, we have the foundation program, the GCI, transportation, state comp. We actually lost some money in because we are having fewer free reduced meals, students, English language, or limited English proficiency, special education, and then the net taxable income adjustment. That's an adjustment that, basically, they're looking at, it used to be they used September 30th data as far as wealth goes. And then there was some talk at the state level, a lot of people file extensions on their tax returns, and so their tax returns don't actually get filed until the middle of October. So, can we look at the November numbers and see if there's a difference in what would have been provided to the counties had they used the true income figures instead of the ones without the extended returns? And so, they've been doing that the last couple of years, and we've been getting an additional amount of money because the income, or the wealth at November is a little bit higher based on those income tax numbers.
Do we get a reimbursement for non-public placement?
We do. There's a formula that's used to determine how much we have to pay of a non-public placement's tuition, and then the county picks up the additional amount.
That's good to know, yeah.
So, if we have a $50,000 placement, they have what they call a 300% number, which is supposed to be 300% of our per pupil. We have to pay that, and then we pay 30% of anything in excess of that, and the state picks up 70% of the excess of our 300% number.
But our non-public is only $200,000. What is our actual non-public cost to us?
Cost to us? It depends, year to year.
It's really raised recently.
I want to say, this year, we have, I want, $400,000 worth of non-public expenditures.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and that is based on...
We can't gauge it, I know.
Right. You know, just which students are in.
It can change tomorrow.
Yes, it can.
A new student can come into this county tomorrow that we're responsible for because they've been through the whole gambit, and that is our obligation, ethically and legally, to educate that child regardless of our cost or where.
Right. That's right. So, essentially, what we end up with is the state's going to allocate $329,000 more dollars next year towards Queen Anne's County Florida. So, what does that mean? Well, at this point, our required maintenance of effort from the county, our state aid projections, so we're anticipating that we're going to have $1.7 million new money next year.
Just through maintenance of effort and state aid?
And then we go to the expenditure side of our budget. And this is how our budget is currently broken down. We're required by state law to report our budget or allocate our budget in these categories that are actually written in state law, administration, mid-level administration, and you can see down through, you know, operations, maintenance, employee benefits. At the state level, they call those fixed charges, so you'll see those terms used interchangeably as we go through some of this, and then the restricted programs. As a pie graph, this is what that looks like. Obviously, a majority of our money is spent in instruction and special ed. If you put those two pieces together, that's obviously more than 50% of our budget. And then the other largest piece is employee benefits, and that also has to do with instruction and special education, because those are those teachers that are, you know, in those areas, their benefits. The next largest piece of our pie is transportation, and most of that has to do with our bus contracts. Largest piece of it. The state also requires we take each one of those categories of the budget and break them down by subcategory, if you will, and they call those objects.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Are you saying in the pie that the category for salary, salaries that you have, can you go back one to the pie?
Well, actually, if we go forward one, I think you'll like this pie better, because this...
Okay, right.
So, we see salaries are $57 million, employee benefits are $20 million. So, if you look at, look at the pie, in this, you can see that 59% of our budget is in salaries, another almost 21% is employee benefits. So, 80% of the money that we spend is in people.
I was curious about where we were in that.
And I don't know how we get that across, because that key point seems to be missed every time there's a discussion about how we spend our money and where. Between salary and employee benefits, I can't do the math, 59, 69, 79, only 21% are those other areas.
Right. And actually, if you were to look at contracts, you know, that's another 7% of our budget, and a majority of our contracts are either the bus transportation or related services for special education, OTs, PTs, speech therapy.
I was going to say, that can include people, salaries and benefits.
I guess one of the spots of argument is at healthcare, and that's under employee benefits.
Yes.
Basically, something we could tweak. We don't want to, but they always argue that.
Well, as we go through this, and we get through some of the things that we're suggesting that is an area that we're looking at. So, we go on. Back in fiscal year 2014, and the reason why I use fiscal year 2014 is that is the latest data. If you remember a little book that used to come out, it's called the Maryland Fact Book put out by MSD, that's the last time that that book was put out, was for fiscal year 2014. And essentially, this is, our cost per pupil at that point in time was $11,935. And you can see how it's broken down. A majority is in instruction, and then fixed charges, and then the next piece is special education.
And where are we today per pupil spending?
We just saw it. $7,000, $7,000.
13.
$7,000, how much?
It's 13, I don't know.
It's seven from the county, but when you add the state and the federal.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, right, right. So, what is it now, 13?
Yes.
And we're 17 on the list out of 24.
In the state, currently.
In the state.
Back in 19, in 2014, we were last. We were 24. We were 24th out of 24. And...
Here we go. Yeah, this is what I wanted to say.
This is a comparison. The yellow line on this chart shows what the state average is spending per pupil. The red line shows where Queen Anne's County is. And you can see back in 2000, or 1992, we were very close to what the state average was. We were like 97% of what the state average was. And over time, we have lost, you know, that gap is getting farther and farther. The next one is rank and state, and this is another one I think is very significant. The Office of Legislative Services does a comparison each year and calculates out what the wealth, the wealth per pupil is for each of the counties and the state. And again, I've only gone through 2014 because that was what was in the last fact book. But the county has been consistently, you know, they were eighth in the state, and then they were seventh. They went all the way up as being sixth wealthiest in the entire state, and down to seventh. And I think they're either at seventh or eighth currently. But you can see where our per pupil expenditure has been over that same period of time. We used to be 11th or 12th in the state in what we spent per pupil, and over time, we've gone down, and we've been as, as far down as the very lowest in the state. Now, I think we have over the last couple of years, and they haven't produced the data yet, but I think we're back up to like 21st, 22nd in the state.
That's something to brag about.
No, but that's, that's better than being 24th.
Yeah, I thought in 16, in 16, we were 17th, but I could be wrong. I could be wrong.
Robin, could you...
That didn't come through the fact book.
If you remember, there's always a counterargument that there are budget people at the county use...
Yes.
To rebut this, you know, so not this figure here, but the philosophy of they give as much percentage of...
Yes, and actually, in the folder that we sent you, there's a document in there called the Overview of County Governments. If you go to chapter seven of that document, and I want to say it's about page 100 of the document, but in chapter seven of that document, it gives you a lot of information about the county, the county governments across the state, and the breakdown of, you know, how much federal funding do they get? How much state funding? How much local funding? And that is one of the arguments that they always use with us, and that's why I provided you with that document. Because if you look at the local funding, it says that Queen Anne's County is about ninth or 10th in the state as far as how much local funding they provide to, to the Board of Education. So that is always their argument, that we're doing our part, you know? It's the state and federal piece that you're not getting. Unfortunately, a lot of our state and federal money is based on our number of free and reduced meal children, and we just don't have that many of them, so we're not able to access a lot of those funds. Next, we started looking at staffing because since we are 80% between salaries and fixed charges for our employees, if we were to have to reduce this budget in any way, you know, or actually, where are our resources being used? They're being used in staffing. So what we did is we did a comparison of actual classroom teachers, school by school, to see where we were as far as student to pupil ratio. And you can see, we go anywhere from Canard here, which is almost 25 students per teacher, down to Southersville Elementary School, which has about 16 students per teacher. And that is on purpose. I mean, if you look at our test scores, you know, you can see that that's where our greatest need is, and that's why we've put our resources at that location. But we are looking at all of those and determining whether some of that can be, we can, you know, change.
Level, level it out some. So, you know, we look at the teacher to student ratio, but we consider other factors is what, you know, is being said. So we consider the academic challenges that the group of students might have at that particular school, and keeping class sizes smaller in schools with students who are academically challenged, or any research will show, show you that that is the right thing to do. Not that, you know, our desired state would be to have 25, 28 students in a class at any school, but students who are not as academically challenged can handle more students in a class. So that's why we wanted to point that out to you. And from my understanding, it is by design that Southersville Elementary School has smaller class sizes because those students, by the data, that school represents students with more academic challenges, and so the smaller classes are appropriate there.
We don't have all the schools on there, do we?
This is just elementary.
This is just the elementary school.
Thank you, sorry.
Yes. And then we also did the same thing at the middle school level, and they're pretty close.
These are averages over all grades in that school?
Yes. And one here, just so that you know, I pulled the fifth grade out of Southersville Middle School and put them back on the elementary school page. So we're really trying to compare, you know, apples to apples.
And the ninth graders at the annex are in the high school level, or?
In the high school level.
Great.
Yes.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And you look at the high school level, and before, before you're shocked, I just want to say now, remember, there's other factors, especially at the high school level that, that influence these numbers. I mean, if you look at just classroom core content teachers, then it works out to be 30 per class. But we know that, you know, there's a lot of CTE, there's the performing of visual arts, there's a lot of different things at the high school level that, that can reduce those class sizes. But they're, they're very comparable as to content level, what we have at both of the high schools. Then we started looking at paraprofessionals, you know, for student support, that support student learning, and across the board, you know, trying to determine, okay, how many full-time paras do we have at different schools? And in addition to just looking at these numbers, you have to, again, look at some of the background information. Okay, well, pre-K, we're required to have paras there, and, you know, which schools do we have, you know, special education programs in because we do have regional programs so that we don't have them in every school? So when you take those into consideration, these, these numbers are very comparable.
I see you have Anchor Points on there. Was Anchor Points included in your, I mean, how does that fit into like high schools or, because it can go from middle to high, right?
Right, but there, I believe currently are just high school students there. And what we, if there's not, it's a very minimal number of middle school students.
I mean, it wasn't listed on our, our high school average per pupil.
Because those students still have a home school, so they are still included in their home school count. But this is for paras, so staffing is different.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And then the other instructional salaries, you know, that are included as part of instructional salaries, academic dean, the program manager at APA, at Anchor Points, instructional specialists, we have readings, math, and teacher specialists at our schools, our guidance counselors, school counselors, media specialists, speech therapists, behavior specialists. So there's a lot of different people that are in the instructional part of our budget. So I don't want you to just think it's, you know, classroom teachers and that's it. There's a lot. And then under district leadership and administrative support, of course, we have, you know, the assistant superintendent, we have all the principals, the assistant principals, all the instructional supervisors here at the main, at the main building. And then we start getting into trying to estimate some costs for the future, and you have these documents in the, in the folder that you were given. But essentially, the cost of a step for next year is going to be $1.3 million.
That's across the board. Every employee that's eligible.
Every employee that's eligible.
As steps.
Or steps.
And, and to be clear, we've not negotiated anything, but we are providing estimates in the event.
Right. Thank you.
And in saying that, everybody who is eligible, there's 27% of our employees who will not be eligible for a step. If we did a cross-the-board 1% increase on all the salary scales, that would be about $630,000. And then what boards in the past have asked for is information regarding those who are not getting a step, what an additional 1% would cost for those, and that would be $175,000. Again, note, 27% would not be receiving any increase if we were to only give step increases across the board. And we go on to healthcare. We've received our preliminary estimates for healthcare increases, and initially, they were talking about almost a 10% increase in our healthcare. Luckily, we have been conservative over the years, and we have been able to have some reserves through the Healthcare Alliance. And if we were to use some of those reserves, which would be about a little over a million dollars worth of those reserves, we can buy down the increase in our premiums by four and a half percent.
And where does that bring our reserve? Because we did that last year, right?
Right. Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Because that changes anyway, right?
Right, it changes each year depending on, you know, what our actual claims turn out to be.
Gotcha.
So if we were to have a four and a half percent increase in our healthcare, that's going to be $705,000 for our active employees, and another $150,000 for the retirees that we currently have on the board. Bus contracts, at this point, I am estimating a 2% increase. I think you remember when we negotiated the last contract, instead of just putting an arbitrary figure in there, we tied the increase in their contract to the CPI, and it's the January CPI which won't be issued until the middle of February. So I won't know exactly. The November CPI was 1.6%, so that's why I've estimated 2%, and we'll just have to see where it comes in when it actually gets here. So that'll be mid-next month when I actually get those figures. The Midshore Special Education Consortium, this is consortium that four other counties, or three other counties belong to, and we purchase a lot of our related services through them, our PTs, OTs, hearing therapists, audiologists, you know, those kinds of things where we can't necessarily afford to have a person on staff, but occasionally, we need some of those services, so we buy those services from the consortium, and that's going up $20,000 for next year.
And back to our pie chart where we listed contracts, is that something that would be a part of that piece of the pie?
It's actually on the transfer piece of the pie.
Okay.
Because we're transferring, Talbot County is the county that houses...
Spend it, and then you move it.
Well, they're the county that, that houses that group.
Okay.
So we transfer our money to them, and then they physically pay the employees that are part of that consortium.
Okay.
And then the last thing I have on here in red and with a big question mark is the new law that just passed, the Maryland Healthy Working Families Act, which we have called the sick leave bill. And we still don't know where this is going to come out. I heard there was additional emergency legislation that has been, you know, rolled out. We don't know. At this point in time, what we're counting on is as of February 11th, this goes into effect, and every hourly employee that we have on staff, for every 30 hours that they work, they have to get an additional, one hour of sick time. So right now, we're trying to figure out what that's going to look like. We have our computer program, we're going back and retrieving data and trying to figure out, okay, how many hours do people work? The limit is 40 hours, so...
That they can carry 40?
That they could, up to 40 hours of sick leave is what they would be issued during the course of the year. So we're looking into this, we're trying to estimate a cost as to what this is going to mean.
Do we know if it would be use or lose? If they could carry it over to the next year, if they didn't use it this year? Say they got to 40 hours and didn't use any of it?
I'm gonna...
We don't know.
We don't know that.
If the person were to separate from us, is there something that we're obligated to pay out? If they, you know, we don't know what the terms of it are. We know that the governor's forming, you know, an office to help employers implement, but there's still a lot, as well as a changing landscape of legislation to help us figure out what we're going to implement.
Do we have any idea when we might know, since we're trying to develop budget right now?
We're hoping very soon, yeah. I mean, like I say, we have somebody who's working on pulling information out of ADP, you know, to get what total costs or total hours worked by hourly employees were last year, and we'll have to do that.
So we can estimate.
Estimate.
Just so we can estimate for...
A number.
Purposes.
And it is going to include substitutes.
It's my understanding, though, that the...
Substitutes and all hourly employees.
Redacted to January 1st, so...
Oh, redacted to January, okay.
How many hourly employees do we have?
A lot. We have, I'm going to say 70-some five-hour paras that work in our special education department.
Just special education?
Just special education. And then we have a lot of hourly tutors, especially in the ESOL program, reading tutors, hourly bus drivers.
Substitutes.
Substitute teachers. That's, that's what they want.
That's the big one.
Huge. Huge. Well, they've been talking, there's a lot of, we discussed this a little bit in my legislative meeting, a lot of discussion on how to, I'd say that how to manipulate that if that comes in with substitutes watching, it doesn't matter, but watching the numbers and watching the hours they have coming up, and essentially, you just wouldn't make them do 30 hours over the year, except for maybe your long-term subs.
Or let them.
So, yeah, right. You just wouldn't contact them once they met their 29. There's been discussions about that by some of the...
Well, the hardest part we have is we have a hard time getting substitutes.
Getting substitutes, I know. We don't want to irritate them.
Living them in any way would not probably be very beneficial.
The level of quality.
Yeah, there's a lot of issues with that, but some of the counties are looking at it because they've got lots of subs in there.
Right, right. There's some counties that are talking about, you know, because then you have the issue of trying to track when they're taking the sick leave, and at what rate do they get paid? You know, those kinds of things. Some counties are just saying, whenever they earn it, we're just going to go ahead and pay it out.
Would it be better at that point maybe to seek a, like, a temporary job service? Like, you know, like they used to do with secretaries to get temps?
Right, right.
And that way would be your...
But they're probably even more expensive. I did temp work for five years. You pay two people.
From the legislation.
Right.
But the markup on support service and not having them provide the same sort of oversight in the hiring process, you know, at this point, I don't know if it's something that superintendent would want to consider.
But then, we did something similar in my former district, but it wasn't necessarily for substitutes, it was for teachers. But the thing of it is that you have to then pay that vendor. You have to pay that vendor for that service, and you got to pay the people who you're trying, and by the time that's all said and done...
Cheaper to pay.
I did temp work for years.
And you don't know those people necessarily.
Yes. They have nothing screened by you at all.
While you can implement some type of screening as part of, you know, that process, they could be coming from everywhere, anywhere. And, you know, I know that many of our substitutes are familiar with our schools, and they may live in the community. I mean, I've seen some of our substitutes working in other places in the county.
Sure.
You know?
Right.
So...
At this point, that's, that's still a big question as to what that's going to look like. Other cost considerations, and basically, what I have done is I went through that five-year trend data and just looked at where there are some areas that we might need to think about increasing the budget and decreasing. I didn't really find very many areas to decrease. Mileage adjustment, about $10,000. The federal mileage adjustment just went up another penny a mile as of January 1, so that's something we need to look at for next year. Legal fees, and that was just based on the five-year trend data, where we have been... Environmental testing, and I'm waiting, this is another one that I'm waiting on a number. There's a new rule, and I said, I don't know if you know anything more about it, but basically, it's lead testing for water, and there's going to be some new... it's lead testing for water, and there's going to be some new requirements that we have to meet there.
State's not quite sure if they're going to require us to test at one main point where the water comes into the building, or if we're going to have to test at every single water fountain. If it is every single water fountain, it's looking about $10,000, right? I mean, if it's just, you know, they want you to do 50%, you're looking at about $5,000. So the most it would probably be on that part is about $10,000. But the description is very vague right now, what they have.
Furniture and equipment. Basically, we have no line item in our budget currently to replace any kind of furniture equipment. Last year, we had to move some money because we needed to buy a classroom of furniture for Stevensville Middle School. We've had to move money on occasion because, you know, we needed to replace cafeteria tables or, you know, those kinds of things. So I think we need to get, at some point in time, we need to put that back in the budget. So there is an allocation there that we have some funds that we can tap into, you know, on a yearly basis in order to do those kinds of things. And it's not just in the, you know, in the classrooms, but in this building, you have chairs break, or, you know, those kinds of things that you need to replace. In the custodial area particularly, we always have floor machines or vacuum cleaners, those kinds of things that need to be replaced. And the same thing in maintenance. So we need to look at all of it.
What have we been funding that out of till now?
We've been-
Because we've been doing it. I mean, not at a great extent.
Right.
But we've obviously been replacing our broken vacuum cleaners, so where do we get that money?
We steal it out of custodial supplies, which is another area that we really need to look at.
We allocated for those, though.
Yeah. I mean, not everybody has what they need, I can say that. I mean-
It's just what's happened, you know, over the years, we've cut, 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 cut. And then, you know, based upon the money we're allocated, so if we were getting like a fund balance like you're talking about, and I would purchase some vacuums, you know, yeah, that way, but that's a one-time, you know, cost. We're looking to really get back into the cycle of replacing it.
Budget item every year.
You have to have the HEPA filters, it has to be, you know, American Lung Association approved, all those things. I mean, it's, they're not cheap.
Good.
And the budget should be established so that you can, I mean, these are ongoing costs of doing business. No school district doesn't buy furniture. No school district doesn't have to replace floor equipment, cleaning equipment, and that kind of thing. That shouldn't be on a hope and a prayer from attrition money. This is the cost of doing business.
Exactly.
Well, they have been traditionally, over the years, starting with the four and a half million cut, the low-hanging fruit, basically, and then they got rid of all of that, we got rid of all of that.
We have custodians that we pay a minuscule amount of money using floor mops versus machines to clean floors.
I'm just telling you what happened to it. It's terrible.
It is, I agree.
It is. Paper. Cut out paper for years, like.
Okay. The next thing on there is retirement agency fee, and I'm waiting, I talked to the guy this morning, and we should have figures hopefully by the end of the month as to what the retirement numbers are going to be looking at, looking like for next year. But I know that they were saying that that agency fee that we have to pay on a per-employee basis was going to increase. Non-public placement tuitions, again, this is one we can, we look at, we determine whether we think the students that are currently in non-public placements are going to stay there, and if we have any inkling that we're going to have additional students. But as, this year, we were way over the allocation for that, so we need to add money into that.
Can I ask you, what does retirement agency do? I forgot that one.
The retirement agency?
What do they do for us?
We all belong to the retirement, all of the employees belong to the Maryland State Retirement Agency. And a couple of years, I think it was maybe five years ago, they started charging anybody who was a participant in the retirement agency a fee on a per pupil basis to fund the administration of that.
Okay, okay. I'll be sending another way to the actuarial value of our employees participating in the state retirement fund.
Well, there's two pieces. There's two things that we pay. We pay the actual contributions for, on employee salary, which is what you're talking about, the actuarial value. But there's also an administrative overhead fee that we have to pay on a per pupil basis.
We know what that will be for the year?
We don't, I'm sorry, per employee basis. I don't. That's what we're waiting on, supposed to have that.
Okay, thank you.
Maintenance contracts, this is, we looked at it last year, and again, I'm going to refer to Sid on this. Last year, we had to change the type of floor finishing that we're using on gym floors.
Basically, the government's saying, hey, yeah, the oil-based that you're using, you're going to have to wean off of because of the VOCs that come off of it, and to go to the water-based floor finish, it's double the cost. I mean, it's environmentally friendly and friendly to the students and staff, but there is a cost associated with it. So instead of biting it off at one time, just would kind of like to do it year by year until we get them all, you know, switched over with that.
And then repairs to building, and this is just based on what we have been doing, our five-year trend data, what we've been spending on repairing our buildings. Luckily, we have more, not more, but we have more skilled people on staff, so we're able to do a lot of things in-house. So we need supplies for them to do that, and that's what that is. And then custodial supplies, and this ties right into what he was just talking about with the floor finishing. You know, we have to wean off of products that we've used for years and start using green products, and the green products are just more expensive. So. And then the last thing there is hourly wage adjustments. And I'm going to refer to Mr. Farley again on this, but we all know that the minimum wage has continued to increase. And as that has happened, we have done nothing over the years to increase any of our hourly wages to our hourly assistants, substitutes, tutors, any of those, home hospital teachers. Nobody has received any kind of wage increase, but as, but the-
Since when? Like, I know it's been a long time, since ever.
Ten years.
At least 10 years.
I would say probably at least ten.
Okay, that's a key point.
So as of July 1st, the minimum wage will go up to $10 per hour. P F Y is the only one who's currently below $10 an hour, but the problem is, we're competing with Walmart, whose entry-level wage will be $11 an hour, you know, other fast food restaurants well above $10 an hour. We're trusting these folks to our kids, and we really need to start moving toward a market-based wage, and Doc Kane is taking, you know, taking the lead in addressing those issues, but for the good of everyone, we need to at least be looking at these wage rates and factoring it into the larger whole of compensation. We just haven't done anything.
That's why we have a shortage of substitutes and custodians and lots of paras and-
We're not getting that big tax cut money that businesses are getting. So we can't handle how many thousand dollars.
They're not negotiating, but they're important.
$10 an hour.
And they help our kids and they help us succeed.
It's so much, it's so frustrating because the commissioners are constantly saying, let's bring jobs to our county, jobs to our county. We're the largest employer, we have jobs, we need to make them more attractive.
Absolutely, Karen, yeah.
We were paying people below the-
Here are our people. Yep, yep.
And you're right, we are trusting these people around our children.
That's right.
We should not have employees that can't eat and pay rent.
Exactly.
Or have two jobs.
Living at poverty level.
Be on food stamps.
Yes, and so they're using-
The Terry change used to be on food stamps, and then they built up the wages after that.
So taxpayers are subsidizing in that way.
Right.
Absolutely.
The next thing we want to talk about is requests for new positions. Each fall, we send something out to all of the schools, and we ask them to submit budgets into the central office. This past year, which was actually fewer than normal, they requested 35 additional staff across the 15 buildings. Right now, we have included 12. And you can see, one of the things that was a request at a lot of the elementary schools was to change their teacher specialist to an assistant principal. And essentially, that would allow the assistant principal more administrative-type duties than what they're currently able to perform.
So what's happening is that person that sits in that position for teacher specialist only at elementary school is really being used as an assistant principal. So that person is assisting the principal when the principal is out of the building, that person is assisting the principal with administrative duties, because, remember, at elementary, there are also a reading and a math specialist. So those reading and math specialists spend the majority of their time out in classrooms and supporting students and teachers, while that teacher specialist spends a good amount of time doing administrative things. So the thought was, make the position what it really is. We are one of a very few districts in the state that does not have assistant principals at the elementary school level, and let them do what they really need to be doing, supporting administrative things, and go ahead and let the math and reading specialists continue to do what they're doing, a distinction of duties. And it also helps to build our bench. So we run short on administrators for the principal level, and we seem to be advertising again and again, and we're trying to create a pool, the pool is thin. So heaven forbid, we have a situation where lots of folks leave the district or have other opportunities, because we will not be able to fill the position with our sitting staff. So it's an opportunity to train, develop a career pathway, and really, to fill a need because they're doing it in a state of work, anyway.
Can we give, I know this comes up every year, did we give the assistant principal at least one of the elementary schools last year? Was it Bayside?
We had, we did have an assistant principal at one elementary school when Mr. Dome was doing the campus school, and he was doing both. Then there was one assistant principal assigned to him.
That was the only?
Right. And when we broke that back into two separate buildings, we got rid of that assistant principal position.
Can you explain that multimedia specialist reorganization?
Oh, yeah, thank you for that. So as we started having this conversation at the beginning of the school year about reorganizing the public information office, and what we are finding is that we do need a person to oversee that office. What the thought process was is to have the person who's going to oversee the public information office to also oversee partnerships, because as we continue to build our partnerships, and I'm grateful that we are, and organize that, there needs to be a person that is responsible for ensuring, you know, certain things are happening with that. And so the idea was to have one person to oversee, whether it's a director like the other offices or whatever, and then have one person who is the communication specialist who does work on all of the public release tasks, who organizes the events that happen in that office that support superintendent and the rest of the district. And then there's the need for someone to sort of work the technology, someone to make sure that the recordings happen at the board meetings, someone to make sure that, you know, they're out in schools and doing whatever AV-type of multimedia work that goes on out in our schools. So, and in addition to website work and all of those kinds of things. So that office really needs three people, and so that multimedia specialist would be that person who is working behind the camera, behind the computer, and those kinds of things.
Why don't we have a price against, up there then? Everything else has a price tag, but that doesn't have a price tag.
And that, we didn't put that in there.
Because, yeah, because we haven't determined- We created, yeah, we created the job description, but we had to do our research to see where they are across the district, I mean, across the state. So we've got some figures, so we'll make sure that we put that in there for you.
It's a director, IT person, so to speak.
Correct.
And organizer of events, da-da-da-da-da, information out to the public, la-la-la. What do we not have right now in that category? We don't have a director, and really, all we have is a person doing the IT and the public release information, so it's so-
We have two people.
We have two people. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have a communication specialist, and we have the public information officer.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask what the difference would be, what, changing a program manager to a principal at the APA, what, is there going to be $17,000 more of, like, what would be the difference? Why change that title?
That was, this is also one of the requests that we received, and that is because the work that that person does or that description for that job in that case really is like a principal.
Isn't the person that's out there already principal? Just without the title?
But, yeah, but last year, a decision was made to call that position program manager.
I don't remember that.
So they lost pay.
They held them steady.
Current, current that position is budgeted as an assistant principal.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
But after one year, it goes back to-
But looking at what the person does, they're really-
So are we now going to go from 14 schools to 15 schools?
No.
How can we not say that when you have to?
I swear we have to.
When you have a nurse out there and teachers and principals, I mean, that's another school.
There's not, there's not a nurse out there. We would like to.
It's up there.
We would like to, but it would also be shared. But what the thinking is, and we haven't had a chance to talk this through, is recall we've been working with, or we've been doing our research on some online work, and some of that would bring students not only online, but evening, right? And so some of that would bring way, a lot more students into that facility. So students who would normally need, say, evening school or twilight school, and we could have it there. If they would need to access online schooling because there was not a teacher available and certified teacher.
I understand that, I understand what you're saying, but how can you then not qualify that as the 15th school?
Because you have, you have to have their requirements to be called a school. And so if you have a school, you have to have certain things in order, they have to test out of that school, that school is assigned by the state a school identification number, there's allocations that have to be sent to that, yeah, testing scores go to that. So it's not a decision that-
They don't test out of APA, so they're there, once they're there, they're forever, and they don't get out?
Their scores go to their home school.
This is, yeah, I don't, I'm not real happy with how that's-
Their school's scores go to their home school because that's not a school.
Why are we bringing them here, bringing the children from the, or from the two high schools, to get their credits to, I was always under the understanding, and if I read correctly in all this paperwork that I have sitting here, is that the APA is for, let me see here, we get grants for behavior, summer school, everything that I see is behavior, and I'm not sure, I had never, ever, and I have asked before, been told why we are bringing kids out of their high schools to here to get their credits to graduate from high school.
Because those students are having major challenges in a traditional setting. So APA is an alternative setting to provide structure. So that's why it has, in this district funds, the teachers, they are Queen Anne's County Public Schools teachers and all of that. But there are some additional requirements that those children need. Some of those requirements have to do with the behavior issues that some of them come with. Some of those requirements have to do with drug intervention that's necessary. And so there are sort of wraparound services that this district has been able to fund via grants, and that's what you're talking about, to support those students. Since we are funding those teachers and thankfully, you know, have partners that help us get those grants that we need to support those students, the thinking is, there are other students who would fare well in a non-traditional setting such as that, and we can capitalize on providing something for those students and earn revenue for the district.
So I'm like, Jen, why don't we just leave it the way it is and not need a principal for an additional $17,000? If we're going to go to the principal end, why aren't we working to make it a school?
I don't know that we would want to make it a school because, right, you got, there are a lot of things that you want to consider, and what you're going to end up with, remember, most of the students that go to APA are experiencing challenges. Some of their challenges have to do with academics, some of their challenges have to do with behavior, some of them have to do with attendance, and when you put all of that in one location and call it a school, you're going to find yourself with a school that is going to be identified as failing.
I agree.
But the point is that each one of those students has a need, and a need that is not currently being met at their traditional high school.
Correct.
Some of those students need longer than other students to, you know, to do well or to graduate, because that's the bottom line, we want students to graduate out of there, and some of them, you know, are quicker about- And some of them, you know, are quicker about, you know, jumping on board with the program, understanding what's expected of them, and complying with it. Point being is every single one of them has a need, every single one of them has a need that is not currently being met at the school setting. And every child does not do well in a traditional setting.
Have we ever had a principal at Anchor Point?
I don't think so.
No.
Here's the thing that you need to consider. These are requests, we're going to share with you, right, we're going to share with you the rationale for the request. You decide if you have the will, the stomach for funding that request or requesting funding, you know, for that.
That's why I had asked about getting the enrollment from month to month from last year. Because I know at certain parts of the year, probably towards the end when we're recapturing credits, there's more kids out there. But I really would like to see what the cost effectiveness is for how many students we have out there for cost to run APA on a monthly basis. And see, then if, then, then I can maybe justify some of these other things.
So I think Ms. DiMaggio also asked for the operating numbers.
I got it.
Okay.
And it's, and then.
Do we have that in that folder?
It's in your.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I couldn't find it, but Robin found it for me this morning, so.
Okay.
But.
Because I'm not saying we should or shouldn't even eliminate that location, but we had talked about looking at alternatives, so.
I mean, we have to, we have to be able to tell our tax base and justify the cost of having that. And right now, I couldn't go out there and justify it because I don't know what the numbers are. You know, that's why I need those numbers.
I have a document that I can share with you, absolutely. But what you've got to realize, and part of the issue with getting data for it, and I've got data for you, don't mistake this, is that students come and students go.
That's why I want a month to month, to see an average of what's there per month.
So I can share with you what we've come up with for you, but students come and students go. When you look at the attendance, what we could come up with the attendance was just students who were currently enrolled in our system, not students who were gone. But we still went back a little bit further for you, and we got something that we're able to share with you.
How about why they are there?
Some of this has why they were, yeah, they all have why they were there.
We need to know why they're there.
It'll say whether it was a student services referral or if it was for discipline.
Right.
Yeah, so you'll have that information. It'll share with you whether the student qualified for free and reduced meals, when they came, when they went, if they received special education services, if they received services because they have a 504. All that information will be certainly shared with you. And what I'll do is I'll just pop it in your folder.
And there's no transportation on this, on this one?
The cost, the transportation for APA.
Okay, because there's no cost, cost figure in here.
I have had comments from parents about this, and it makes a huge difference. They're actually staying in Queen Anne's County because of this, these opportunities. These children are, I mean, it's, they're temporary. I have a friend of mine whose son went through this. He was going down the wrong path. He went to APA for just a semester, comes back, he's graduated, he's a great member of the community. He was not, and the one thing was getting him away from the environment of his high school. And that was very helpful. And that's just one case of, and they were thrilled to have this opportunity to put their child somewhere else, even for a short period of time, to start moving him in the right direction.
I think there's no doubt, there's a need for that segment.
I agree, I mean, I'm not saying that, but you still have to look, when your tax dollars are going to something, you have to justify the cost versus what you're providing. And that's what I want to see. I can't make that justification if I don't have that side of it. I see that side of it, but I want to see the other side of it.
Sure, you want to see the dollars, and certainly we've got that for you. But I do want to say just in general, that when we're talking about students that we are trying to save, you're not going to see a cost saving. It costs money to educate this group of children.
But we're talking about a budget right now, which is dollars, so that's why I got to see that stuff.
But we can't separate the person from the dollars and the resources that have to be spent.
Sure.
Right.
So, yep, I'm going to save this for you or share this with you.
Can you explain the nursing issue? Are we have some stats where it's necessary to have a nurse there? We have no nurse in this building, is that right?
There's no nurse in that building. And that does say nurse, AP, one nurse at APA. It doesn't say anyplace else.
So is it shared, it is a shared nurse and?
So.
It's not what it says up there.
Right. Did we have a request, I can't recall, from a school for additional nursing? Yes, we did, Kent Island Elementary School requested.
They're going to share a nurse from here to Kent Island.
I'm not saying that that is what would happen particularly, but if nurses had to be shifted around.
They don't have a nurse at Kent Island Elementary School now.
They do.
They do.
But they have, they also have the self-contained special education, early elementary class there, and there is a number of children there that either have a feeding tube or need to be catheterized.
Well, and I understand that.
That kind of thing.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
So they, they're requesting some additional nursing help.
I just have a problem putting a full-time nurse out to APA.
So how do we handle APA in a nursing emergency now? Who comes in there? Who would we call over there?
So sometimes they're able to get somebody, yeah, they are, but we've got an idea about that. But sometimes they come over from.
Margaret Kaufman.
And, I'm sorry.
From the health department.
And Centerville Elementary School.
Yeah, I was going to say, Centerville's right across the road, so.
Part of the confusion, Dr. Kane, is in the past, the principals have asked for a whole bunch of positions, and then the superintendent narrowed it down.
Exactly.
And then to put this light up is usually what the superintendent wants us to do.
Uh huh. And so that's what I say, I can provide for you the rationale for this, and you decide what your will is.
This isn't everything they ask, this isn't everything.
Oh, no. And our request, thirty-five positions requested.
Our request this year was thirty-five. Last year, they asked for fifty.
So these are your priorities in your mind?
These are the ones that stand out as priorities among the ones that principals asked for.
Okay, so this is to be considered.
Mm-hmm. These are.
These are just requests.
Yes.
These aren't.
Right. We're just saying that it's not all of the requests, right.
Right.
Let's see, so let's go back up the list here a little bit. Additional teaching staff, we're asking for six positions, and you can see there where they are, one at Canard, one at.
I can't see that.
You know I can't see it.
I'm actually kind of impressed by that.
Can you go over those positions, why, like, Canard is because of class size? I mean, they have the highest class size.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Is that still an issue?
Fourth or fifth grade, yes, they will have twenty-five students in the class.
Didn't we give one last year to Canard because of the same problem?
I think we asked for one, but I think when the budget finally got settled, no, they did not get an additional position. Bayside got an additional position last year for fifth grade because of class size. But Canard, I do not believe they got an additional position.
Well, we only asked for four and a half additional positions last year, and we didn't get funded. Right. But I don't remember what Greg pulled out.
Well, I think what we ultimately ended up doing with Bayside was we had a position at Centerville Elementary School, second grade position, that we didn't fill, and we moved that position to Bayside.
Okay.
So you didn't, other than that, you didn't backfill any of the other four that were in the budget that we didn't get money for? Okay. So it was on the list that we just didn't.
We increased our teaching staff, but by one or two?
What's that?
We increased our teaching staff with our budget as it was.
Actually, by none.
By none. We moved.
Right, we moved the position from this building to that building, so overall.
I just think that is absolutely unbelievable that we are even able to, hopefully only one year, survive on our current staff, considering everything that changes and comes down the pike onto them as new responsibilities. And they do well, they do exceptionally well. But I don't know very many businesses that don't hire at least a position a year.
Well, I know definitely, I mean, Centerville Middle School, I know this firsthand because their math specialist teaches my daughter's advanced math class. So I know they've been dying for a math teacher for the last couple of years.
Right. And they're actually using one of their special education teachers as a math teacher now. And they really need that position back in special education.
Sure.
So that's why they're requesting.
There's definitely a need for all those, I can see, yeah.
Robin, how many assistant principals are at each school, at each high school now? Isn't it two?
We have two at each high school.
Do you want to move it to three?
We want to move it to three. Now, Kent Island, part of the problem there is one of the two is assigned to the annex. So there's really only one assistant principal and the principal who are currently on-site at the building.
I remember that last year, talking about that last year.
Yeah, and we actually, we were going to rearrange how they were going to do the annex last year, and we actually cut that position from the budget. And Mr. Sharkey-Gloss has come back and said, that's the one position I really need.
Okay.
So then they would have two, one at the annex, two at the main campus.
Right.
So why Queen Anne's County High School, do we need an extra one?
Well, when would we be moving? Is that annex there forever? I mean, ninth grade's going to be there forever, is that pretty much what we're saying?
Probably, yes.
Okay, that's all, just give me an honest, just give me an honest, you know, answer. Okay, then that would make sense that Kent Island would need an extra one.
But I'm not sure why Queen Anne's County High School needs another one. Any reason?
That was a request from the principal.
Yeah, and it is based on the challenges that they are having with the students there.
What are the, can you read those out? Do we have your, I don't have your.
I'm reading it.
No, I will send it.
The individual schools?
You send it to us.
One at Canard Elementary School, one at Kent Island Elementary School, one at Stevensville Middle School, which would be in English Language Arts, one at Centerville Middle School, which would be a math teacher, one at Queen Anne County High School, which would be Computer Science, and then one at Queen Anne County High School, which would be split between English Language Arts and Social Studies. So those will be the six positions.
So what is the justification for those?
So that is based on enrollment, except for the computer science teacher, which they have been evidently requesting and requesting, and we've not been able to.
Yeah, parents have been doing it.
Right, fun, and, yeah, parents are quite upset that we still don't, because we offer.
At Kent Island?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, at Kent Island, but we don't go over at Queen Anne's. And so they've asked for, based on enrollment, students that need to take the courses for ELA and Social Studies now, whether, and it's point five and point five, so you see it as one point oh, whether or not we'd be able to find one teacher that has certification in both areas is a challenge, but it really is point five and point five. Stevensville, well, let me go backward just a little bit. So the next one will be Centerville Middle School. That was a vacancy that existed already, and what he did was he plugged a special educator into that position, but that special educator needs to do special education, so we still have the need for a math teacher there. At Stevensville Middle School, that is a, that is an actual need for an ELA teacher based on enrollment. Kent Island, that's another one based on enrollment, and Canard is the same thing.
What grade were those elementary? It doesn't really matter, they moved.
What's your question?
Elementary schools, it doesn't matter, they're flexible grading.
Well, sometimes the grade level has way more, and so you know coming in, and you probably can't absorb that for a year, but after a minute, you're going to have to go ahead and add another teacher, else you're going to end up with twenty-eight, twenty-nine kids in a class.
The Centerville Middle, when you spoke about that, you said that they have a position there, it's just not filled?
Correct.
So, but is it funded? If it's, we bought it before.
So what ended up happening was there was a need for a math teacher, they were not finding a math teacher, so they had a special educator that could also teach math, and so they took that person from special education to fill the math position. That need is still there for special education, and that teacher needs to go back and teach special education, and we need to fill a position for math at that school.
My question is, we have a position there, so we evidently refunded that position at one point.
Well, we also have a teacher, the math specialist is also teaching a math class at Centerville Middle.
So you had, you had a need that wasn't filled, so the position was there.
So it went away?
But he filled it in with a person that was not part of the classroom teacher staff, but a special educator.
I'm seeing that, what I was wondering is, the position is there, so evidently years ago, the position came in with funding attached to it.
Yeah.
So why do we want to ask to fund the position again, no matter who's in it?
Something must have happened, I don't know if somewhere down the line they switched somebody out, because they certainly, last year, switched somebody in to that position that was already there.
Well, they do things out at Centerville Middle School in pods as well. So each pod has, is like self-contained with a teacher in each subject, and I believe that, it's almost been three years, I think, that that math position hasn't been, to make equal pods in every grade for that, for that grade, that position was never, was never filled. It was always filled with the subs, the special ed teacher or the math specialist teaching that class. That's how it explained to me as a parent whose children go there.
Right, the position was.
That position was never, was never.
The position was never, right, was never funded.
The salary was never put out for it.
That's right, so don't call it, there's a position there.
The need, the need was there, they pulled somebody from another position.
Right, we need a math teacher to teach that class.
They need a math teacher.
It is a position with a dollar amount.
I would say we need a position.
That's what it says.
But it's, that's.
That's what it says.
But the way it's described, sounds like the position exists, and you're just refilling it with a variety of people.
Well, there's, I mean, every grade has to have math.
No, no, all I'm saying is the position, she's got it.
Well, you can look at it another way, because special ed position isn't built, so. Two jobs, only one person being paid one salary and one job amount, one funded amount.
One funded job.
Right, thank you. Now, so I can sort of discern here where these requests came from principals, teacher specialists and assistant principals, those were principal requests?
Yes.
When we sent out their dream sheet, so to speak. Additional teaching staff, that's principal request.
Yes.
Assistant principals, that's principal request for additional staffing. Nursing staff, that was a principal request.
Right.
Maintenance staff probably came out of the maintenance department.
Mr. Pender.
Driver trainer probably came out of transportation, well, it does say that. Program manager to the principal, that's a principal request.
Right.
And then multimedia specialist, and that's a.
Central office.
A central office request. Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on these?
There's just no dollar amount for the multimedia specialist.
Right, right. We, at the time that we put this together, we hadn't done a, determined what that salary would be.
That's been determined today. You said at the time this was put together.
No, we're looking at what the rate, the going rate is across the state, so we can have something in there for you by tomorrow.
And right now, it does exist, but it's a contract or an hourly rate?
For which?
For the director?
Director of what, the media specialist?
Dr. Kane said we have a director and we have the.
Communication specialist.
Communication specialist.
Right.
And we'll be adding a third position.
Specialist would be a new position.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
But we never had a director before.
No.
So that should be up there, too.
But someone's filling it.
But someone is in that position.
As an hourly employee or under a contract.
No, that is a management position.
That's already been funded.
Mm-hmm.
See, I thought we were told that that was, right now, a contract.
No, that's.
No, the communication specialist position was Geneva's.
The director, the director position.
We don't have that.
Why, just ask that.
Right, the position is not a director, I believe, what is it now, a coordinator?
Or public information? Or public information?
The PIO. Coordinator. Thank you, it is a coordinator position.
And that we don't have right now as a paid salary, it's an hourly rate?
No, it is, it is a paid salary.
The communication specialists currently were paying as an hourly rate.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Communication specialists were currently paying as an hourly rate.
Because it's under contract.
Right, because we couldn't fill the position permanently.
Designed earlier this year, and then we just hired an hourly person to fill that for the remainder of the year.
Which position is Jeff's position?
Coordinator of Public Information.
Coordinator of Public Information.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yes. Have all that clear?
Okay, so then the next thing we have is new requests for programs. And you just had a presentation at the last board meeting about the early college academy and dual enrollment. Well, my understanding is that we have 90 students at Queen Anne's County High School that are interested in this. Well, we need to come up with a cost as to how this is gonna look, you know.
I was gonna ask, I don't mean to throw anybody off, but I know that this happened to me last year. My son signed up for two college courses, and I, I guess I must live in no means land or something. I thought that that was paid for by Queen Anne's County Public Schools. The classes were, were even maybe not paid for, but there was a different rate?
Yes.
Or something?
Yes, if they're enrolled in dual enrollment.
Okay.
Then the, then the community colleges give them a reduced rate.
Okay.
As far as what they're paying. Then, on top of that, if they are, if they qualify for free and reduced schools, then the Board of Education has to pay for those classes. We also have to, there was a.
See, I don't think.
A couple of years ago.
I don't think our parents know that.
That, right.
Because we have children.
Some of them do.
Well, maybe some, yeah, and you're right, you're right, but I, I know some parents, I didn't know that. And I know parents, I know some kids that really would have liked to have last year and this year be in dual enrolled, or in that circumstance, and they had no idea that, that we would pay for that.
So that's part of our issue with making sure that everybody has access, so they have to have information for it, but that also, remember, is the transportation, or it has been in the past.
Right, right.
A transportation issue.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, now for all other students who are duly enrolled, we have to pay 10% of the cost of their.
Okay, okay.
10% of their tuition.
Yeah.
And that was a bill that passed through the legislature.
Right.
Three or four years ago, we had to start doing that.
Okay.
Isn't some of the work that PIO's group would be doing, is making sure parents understood these kinds of things?
Oh, no, this is academics, that's CNI, that's CNI, that's not PIO.
It's a guidance counselor.
Oh, okay.
They're starting to really get the word out, I think, to the parents, to let them understand that. Virtual Academy, this is something we've been talking about, that kids would be able to go on. This was part of the, having the principal at the APA, they would be overseeing this virtual academy, where kids would be able to take classes online, and then.
And so, but just worth mentioning also is that with this virtual academy, we're gonna go visit one if they have Frederick, but we, that is revenue producing. So the intent is to hopefully bring back some families who are homeschooling their students, so they are not currently students, so we would get, you know, the allocation for those students, so it is potentially revenue producing.
Just a real quick question on that, and it really isn't a budget related, but thinking of, you know, making it equitable for all students, would a student who wanted to take an excess of credits, like, like an advanced student that wants to take a class, would they also be able, qualify for that, or is this just for kids recapturing or trying to come back?
No, it would be for that student who wanted to accelerate as well.
Okay.
So the, the only challenge we would have is figuring out the schedule.
Okay, that's all I just wanted to know real quick.
I just don't understand, when you said revenue producing, who ultimately pays for it? Like, where's this money come from?
Right, so for students who are not currently in our school system, there is a daily, a per pupil cost, right, that schools receive when students are enrolled.
Received from?
The state.
Okay.
And part of that, and part of that is the state, part of that is local. So we just had some conversation about the three different areas where funds come from per pupil. So, part of it is local, part of it is state, some of it is, you know, federal, what have you. But when we don't have students attending, we get none of that. But when we have students enroll, we get funds for that.
Enrolled in a virtual academy.
They would be enrolled in Queen Anne's County Public Schools.
Going through the virtual academy.
Going through a virtual academy.
And, and this is sometimes because they are unable to be in the school setting?
So in my experience, and I just went through this in my prior district, students that are enrolled in virtual schools are a multitude of different reasons, some of them are ill. Some of them have religious, their families have religious beliefs about the curriculum that's being taught.
The family just wants them schooled at home.
They may work.
They don't have an, they don't have an aversion to them being enrolled. They just don't want them in the system.
Responsible for graduating your student, your shelter graduating from Queen Anne's County.
Could we get a presentation?
I actually have clients who.
That would solve a lot of these questions.
But it's, it's interesting.
No, I know, in my work, just with clients who are experiencing extreme anxiety, they're unable to be in the school system, and this is an opportunity for them, and in those situations, a lot of times the parent ends up picking up the slack and doing the homeschooling, so this is a good way to make them a part of the county, not like someone isolated in this minor little school, homeschool, yeah, I get, I get it.
So there are about, I believe, our last check was about 200 students who are homeschooled right now. And even if half of those students came back to Queen Anne's County Public Schools, that'd be revenue for us. And so part of the funds that we pay would be diminished because we're receiving revenue, because these students are now enrolled in our school systems. And we're not even talking about the 60-plus students that we currently have out on home teaching.
Hospital, that's what I was gonna say, or something like that, yes.
Anxiety and lots of different things.
We get to count them, even though they're being schooled elsewhere.
That's right.
This would hold.
We still have to pay a home teacher.
Yes, we do, we do, but we do get funding for that. Now, if you look at the scheme of things, you get this much funding, you have a classroom student compared to this much funding, and a student who has resources coming to their home, of course, it costs more of that funding dollar amount to get that teacher there than in the classroom.
Right.
But this would open up the homeschool group.
A whole new set of children that we've not been able to reach.
Home care, healthcare, anxiety group, blah, blah, blah.
Expensive, because they're not there to use the toilet paper and the, I mean.
Right, right.
I think it'll be cheaper.
That is correct. Yeah, I wonder if.
We're looking at programs that will provide everything that the child needs for schooling. So the computer, the materials of instruction, if they're taking art, art supplies, if they're taking music, the instrument, you know, whatever.
And I guess the end result, will they receive a diploma?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that's the first question people are gonna ask.
Up to the graduation.
Absolutely.
Exactly, attend the graduation.
There's a sense of inclusion, and without some of the challenges that may, that students may be facing.
That's why I think a presentation on this would answer all of our questions.
Yeah, and as soon as we, as soon as we are, you know, prepared, we're still doing our homework for that, we'll definitely. And I think I might have mentioned last board meeting that we'd be sharing that with them, so.
Oh, do we have any idea if we were able to achieve this, would the funding per student be the same as it would?
In my experience, it's about half.
Okay.
In my experience, it's about half. And that was in another state, so we'd have to, we're doing a part of our work in getting information, is finding out what that would be, and looking at the different models that we could do here in Maryland. So Frederick County has a model that's going right now, and so we'll be going up to visit with them in a while.
But it's still revenue that we don't realize now.
Because we do not currently have these students enrolled in our system.
Okay, great.
School day SAT, and this would just be making the SAT test available to students during the school day, and there is a cost associated with that. And then band uniforms, which is something I know that has come up just recently. Last year, we had requested $50,000 as part of our capital budget to fund band uniforms, and then, and it did not get funded by the county. So then when we went back and used our fund balance and made, asked for an allocation of fund balance, we used $30,000 based on the number of students that were in the band. The $50,000 was gonna buy 100 band uniforms, and there were only like 45 students in the band, so we thought that was excessive. So we cut it back to $30,000, and we've all seen the emails from the band director and the.
But shouldn't it have been brought back before the board, considering the board, even though it may have not been funded? The board approved the $50,000.
It did come back to us, that's how we approved the 30.
I didn't approve $30,000, I never approved $30,000. You may add, but I didn't.
It's been through the fund balance, right?
Well, right, I did.
To use the fund balance.
Right, when we took over the letter to allocate the fund, $599,000 worth of fund balance.
It was in that letter, now I remember.
It was in that letter.
Because that gave us, I think, I think Mr. Paluski even gave us a dollar amount per band uniform that would cover for the current students in the band.
So my, okay, this is my question, is the $30,000 still sitting in the account for the band?
Yes.
Then we need to give the band the approval to go ahead and order his uniforms, because he only has until the January 31st is what I'm reading.
He's saying they're costing 50, though.
So he can pay, no, he can pay half of it this year, and he can pay half of it next year. So we'll go ahead and fund the 30, and then we will fund, because the price is getting ready to go up.
I hear you, I know.
As of January 31st.
He has 30 kids in the band, 35 kids?
No, he has more than that, he has more than that. Well, it's more than it was last year, and he anticipates increase next year. And, and one of the things he uses to entice children to come into the band and secure them, make them feel comfortable, is that they're gonna have a uniform.
Well, and they need more uniforms than they do students because of size.
Right, right, you have to have a number of sizes to choose from.
We funded, we funded over 50%, if you funded 30,000 of a 50,000 request for 100, we clearly funded it.
He requested 100, initially, and we cut it back to 50.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And he said he could do it for 50, and he found a company that could do it for 50, that's why.
That's what's getting ready to go up.
But 50 was for 100 uniforms.
No.
No, 50 uniforms.
I misunderstood, that was for 100.
Yeah.
50 was for 100.
100 uniforms.
I thought he was asking 100,000 to pay for the uniforms, and we cut it back to 50,000.
No.
No, I don't.
50, and we cut it to 30.
I think it was always 50,000.
50,000 for 100.
And we gave him 30. His initial request was for $50,000.
Right.
But you can't buy just for how many kids you have in the band at the time, because not every child wears the same size.
Exactly.
So we funded 30,000.
Well, we actually funded 50, but the county didn't do it.
Okay, but so we.
But there's $30,000 in there now.
Yes, correct.
That was approved, that is in there.
Yes.
So my feeling is, is that we need to let him know that he can, because as of January 31st, from his email, that bid is now gonna go up, they've only held it until the end of January. As of the end of January, it goes up to two years of new prices. So let's, let him know, give him the $30,000, and order your uniforms, and then we'll, whatever the balance is, then we need to put it into the budget issue, instead of 50,000.
Can we do that? Can we project 20 into a budget next year that we aren't even discussing yet?
Well, it would be this budget that we're talking about, the money's already done.
Oh, I see, you're right, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, Nan, you're right, you're right.
I think we ought to look at it and see what it is, because if he, he may have plenty.
We've already looked at it.
He may have plenty of uniforms with 30,000.
He doesn't, he needs testing.
Did you read the email?
Yeah, but he needs. But he's trying to get 100 uniforms, he may not need 100 uniforms.
If you have 50 kids in the band, not every child is gonna wear the same size.
For every kid, I mean, that's my point.
I mean, these are gonna last what, 20 years, we wouldn't have to buy new uniforms for 20 years.
I think it's been how long, 10 years?
15 years.
15 years, right.
And Nan can attest, she went and picked them up, they're full of holes, they're done, they're maxed.
I mean, we have.
But I didn't see that he was asking for 100 uniforms.
I don't think it was 100 uniforms was what he's got.
He specifically gave us the number of band members there were.
His bid is for $50,000, so he only has 30, so if he says go ahead, if he doesn't go ahead, we don't get uniforms.
No, he needs to go ahead, no one says he shouldn't.
But no one has given him permission to do it.
Oh, okay.
Right, right.
That's what he's asking, that's what, absolutely, and that's what.
But he couldn't, because he needed 50, and we only allocated 30.
He's known for months that he needed half to put down, the company told him, if you pay for half, I mean, the email said it all.
But that's not how it was budgeted last year, that 30,000 was not understood as half.
50,000.
Exactly, exactly.
So he could pay for the hit, for the whole amount.
This is the first I've heard about the 30 not covering his needs. This is the first I've heard about it.
I don't remember, but it was 30,000, but.
Just give the okay for the 30.
I didn't see that it was 100.
Well, we already did.
We already did that, we already did that.
We don't need to, okay, anything, we did that much.
It's the additional we had to talk about.
Yeah, that's.
He never got authorization to.
To order them.
Order enough that cost 50.
So we need for someone to give him authorization, rather be you or Greg, to let him know that he can go ahead and order his uniforms, so that the price doesn't go up by January 31st, or after January 31st.
And we will see to it that we try to get that as a line item in this year's budget, whether it gets funded at the county level or not, it will be a request.
We would have to.
We had to do it last year, that's exactly how we did it.
We don't need to say the rest of it, have him order what he needs with the 30.
No, I disagree with that.
Ms. Langgraff, they currently have 30,000, I know that a member of your staff contacted the school, so is there any reason why he wouldn't be able to order using the 30,000 that's allocated to him right now?
No, there's no reason he can't order that many. What he's saying is, he can't order enough to have available sizes for band members that would be coming in the future, and that he would basically, next year, he would have to put in another order for more band uniforms.
Right. And a higher, then a different color, a different dye, yeah.
What he wants is us to allocate an additional $20,000.
So he can order what he wants.
The ones that he needs to order.
Everything that he needs.
We don't have $20,000. Well, that's a budget item for this year. We have to put it in the list. Now, he's not talking about.
No, 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 but what he's saying, see, there's already $30,000, okay, there's already 30. The company has told him, you know, if you put the order with us, right, then next year, the 20,000, we'll go ahead and get the uniforms, because I think it takes like six or seven months to make that many uniforms. So what he, all he's asking is that, that he have his 30,000, which we say it's already there, exactly.
That's 60 uniforms.
And that we put 20,000 in our budget this year, so that he can order enough, so everyone, yeah, he wants to know that we're gonna pay that $20,000 when that bill come, when the bill comes due next year.
When the, when the balance comes due.
He'll have 30 to place the order, and we'll owe 20 when it's completed.
So he's, he's got money for 60 right now.
So what I'm saying is, that what you're saying is, if he needs the 50,000, right?
Right.
In one order.
Right.
And you are committing 20, you are committing $20,000 regardless of approval of the budget, is what you're saying. Because you're saying to him, go ahead and order based on a budget that is not yet approved. So.
True.
You are saying, I'm just making you clear about what you're saying, you're saying, regardless of a budget that is approved or not, you are going to ensure that from somewhere, you find $20,000 to give for band uniforms. That is what you're saying, if you are giving him the okay. If he has to have this 50,000, I am in one order.
He has to have 100 instead of 60 uniforms.
Do we know what the cost would be if we delayed, like, if we don't let him order in time?
I forget it go up.
He just said it was gonna go up, he didn't say.
You know, I'm just questioning at that point, like, are we talking 10,000 more?
They've held the bid for two years.
And then along come the issues, like Sharon had mentioned, colors not matching.
Right, exactly.
And then we got a band looking all sloppy.
Exactly.
And do we want it?
So, so last year.
My point is, somebody needs to say, do 30, what is the average number of kids he has in the band?
Sid, can you find out how many kids he has in there?
I thought he said 45.
Do we need more than 60 uniforms for that number? If we do, you know, then I'll consider it.
Well, I think he said he had 45.
I really find it hard to believe that he would be asking for more than he needs. I mean, he's very, very conservative, and most teachers are, and I can't, he's going to the effort of doing this.
And he knows whether those uniforms are good or not.
And it's been 15 years, 15 years.
And I have to say, I do look, I mean, I've seen them, they do kinda look a little outdated.
They're worn.
A lot outdated.
I am not arguing, they need uniforms, I'm just saying, what is the right number?
Because they're never gonna match.
I think we need to rely on him to do that.
I wanna go back to last year's budget.
Expert on what size a band is, and it might possibly be, I agree with.
And the next 15 years, he may have 100.
He might, right.
Well, back in the day, they did.
Well, I mean, if you look at the size of Sellersville Middle School band, and the size of Centerville Middle School band, and the number of eighth graders, he can project pretty easily out of those who are coming for those uniforms. I mean, it's not a hard projection.
And although it may be hard to find the, you know, commit the money, are we saving taxpayers' money, because then.
It's gonna go up.
The numbers are gonna go up, but we don't have a concrete info on how much that's gonna go up, so that's a little, makes me a little curious.
So he's given an estimate, if the limited number of uniforms were repurchased now, with an additional allotment being purchased at any time later, we would, we would force the cost to be at least an additional $5,000 to $6,000 more the cost to be at least an additional $5,000 to $6,000 more than if they were all purchased in one order.
Can I ask why the county commissioners denied that request?
Well, it was a part of our original budget, and they denied the whole budget.
It was capital.
No, was it, was it capital?
Yeah.
It was a capital, and then, if you recall.
Because they think we sit on money.
Wait, that's.
What you're saying, Sid?
I'm pretty sure it was in the capital, and then if you recall, we went back and we asked for the fund balance, which commissioners have generally said, hey.
You got a fund balance, use it.
Well, one-time maintenance projects, and those things upkeep, and then they got on us for spending it on band uniforms at that time, if you recall that, that's kinda when the whole.
And this past time, they got on us for not spending it on band uniforms. You have that fund balance, use it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it was originally denied in the capital part, and then came through in the fund balance portion of it.
And Ms. Kelly, this is for 104 uniforms, so the 50,000 would cover 104 uniforms, spread out over two separate.
Payments. Two separate years, actually, two budget years.
But I thought too, that we did place a budget item in the capital budget prior to anything being approved, that that was one of our items that we were asking for.
It was, yeah.
So it would be the same this year. This is one of our items we're asking for, for this budget, is the additional 20 that will be due.
Just be prepared for not getting it.
Well, we know that, we know that.
Well, then we'd have to use our fund balance to, to cover it. I mean, that's, that's what we would be forced with if we would.
I think we might get the question, why did you order them if you didn't have the money? Which I think is what Dr. Kane is saying, approving something, but, but we did that last year with these. This came at the last minute last year, if you remember. Kind of is a big surprise, maybe not to Jen, because she has kids.
I don't think it was last minute. I think he's, he contacted us in like about this time.
No, it wasn't last minute, because it was in our, it was in our, it was in our presentation for FY.
He said he had to wait till the budget was done.
Where did I write that down at? Oh, February 22nd, we had the recommended 2018 budget.
Okay.
And on page 13, there was a construction fund slide that, that showed that we were requesting $50,000 for that.
Well, that is sort of last minute. I mean, we're in January.
In February?
February, honey, your budget has to be ready March whatever.
Yeah, but he had brought it to us before that.
But see, I didn't know that because I wasn't a board member, so maybe for me, it was last minute, and it was a big surprise, and, you know, I'm all about dye lots and holes.
Right, yeah, you should know.
I'm not gonna send our kids out there on the field looking like rags. I'd be sitting there doing it myself.
Well, he wanted the uniforms, because apparently they're going to Disney World in March.
Exactly.
And they're wearing the old uniforms this year.
We also, you know, it's an attractive thing for a student to wanna think about the band and to, to be a part of that, and that's part of the.
I, I think that's been one of the reasons some of his students have dropped out, is the condition of these current uniforms.
They're horrible. Oh, they're moth ridden.
If they are not moth ridden and threadbare.
And Greg went up and looked at them, I mean, he said they were meant.
They don't fit them.
Right, right.
So I just wanna make sure that I'm clear.
We've talked all the way around it, have we talked through it?
$30,000 is currently allocated, and you are committing either asking the county government for an additional $20,000 in next year's budget, or having to use your fund balance in order to fund the additional $20,000 for these bands.
I think that's the only way we can do it, because really, that's the decision we made last year.
Yep, that's where we're gonna be at.
We thought it would be enough. It wasn't unforeseen for us.
It's a pride factor, too.
I can't renig on the whole deal.
We want to be proud.
We can't renig on the whole deal because the bid came in higher.
I was gonna say, do we need a vote?
That was the other thing he had to do, he had to get three bids, it took a while.
Do we need to take a?
I think we do need to take a vote on this.
Take a vote?
I guess the only reason I wouldn't be voting for it is I, I think that 100 is just a big number when you, you really only need, what you said, 45 is a high number.
I don't know, did he say 45?
And we're buying 60 uniforms.
I looked at it.
But you've only got two choices for one third of your people.
Sid's got it.
In his email, he currently has 50 uniform members and two drum majors. He said, what we found is 50 uniform members, a stock of 70 uniforms is not enough to provide an ample selection of sizes to fit all of the people that wanna participate in a marching band, based upon their size of the uniform and size of the person's body.
Yeah, because other than standing and fitting everybody for a uniform, there's no other way to do it.
He's, he's saying that 70 uniforms that he could buy with the 30,000.
You make a motion.
70.
Yeah, he could buy 70.
He could purchase 70 uniforms for the 50 band members, but what he's saying is that the size, that would not be enough sizes for somebody that's, you know, the husky cut like me, or the athletic cut, for my mom.
We're the stiffened child.
I'm kidding, or, you know, but healthy, you know, but the different sizes, you know, six to, you know, I mean, the five foot, he's saying that, you know, he needs a, you know.
30 spares?
30 more on top of that. So what you will be looking at, if I'm interpreting this correctly, is, you know, 50 students and 100 band uniforms would be ample enough for, for him.
For his needs.
You know, jacket, the plume, the hat, pants.
Plus the idea of how many more band members there may be, it's a great program to think about growing.
20,000 additional funds in the budget. 2019 budget.
20 for the 2019 budget. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to allocate $20,000 in the 2019 budget for the Queen Anne's County High School band uniforms.
I'm second it.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Oh, discussion should come before the vote.
Simply because, I, I just wanna be sure that we don't need to amend that, because yes, and you could put that in the request, the budget, without having to take a vote, but your issue was that you were going to use fund balance in the event that it was not, the budget was not approved. And that was the sticking point.
Is that our only choice for a funding, it otherwise is fund balance?
No, we did, no, cut the budget.
Or could we word it that we would.
20,000 somewhere else.
Examine the budget, given the funding does not get approved, we could examine the budget for other areas that we could draw the 20 from, instead of sticking ourselves with.
I think that that is more appropriate, because you don't know what's gonna happen.
You don't know that your, that your.
Where it's gonna come from.
Fund balance is gonna happen.
I never said the fund balance anyhow.
How does this work, do we, when we want the money from the county commissioners?
We figure out where we have to take it from.
Not in your motion, you didn't.
But let's, let's get it.
Do I need to?
Let's get it clarified, that we're going to take it, just, we don't know where. It depends on the appropriateness of.
I think that's what you, her motion was pretty general, so you don't have to.
Yeah.
Clarify that.
I, I'm not.
I mean, we would have to reexamine no matter what.
Oh, okay.
She's making a motion to include it in the FY19 budget.
Right.
But you don't need to take a vote to include it in the FY19 budget. The point was.
If it was coming from a certain area.
If it is not funded, what are you going to do with it? I mean, how are you going to pay for it? That was the point. And while you don't have to be so narrow as to say only from fund budget.
Right, and I didn't say that, I never said that.
No, you did not.
No.
You did not, that was the discussion, but that's not what you said.
No, that's not what I said, no.
So we can just make another motion.
And if you don't feel like you wanna mention how it's gonna be covered, then don't.
I don't feel that we do need to.
But we need to make another motion that we will ensure it is covered, isn't that?
That's what she just did.
That's what I just did, by making the motion.
I think we're done.
And you all, you all agreed to it, we got a second, everybody agreed except for Bev, but that's, that was what the motion was, that basically in 2019 budget, we'll find the 20.
It's included in that budget.
It's included in that budget.
But we didn't say that, so in the event it's not funded.
She did. I did. What did I say, Jackie?
Mrs. Demonge, 20,000 in FY2019 budget for Queen Anne's County High School band uniforms. Motion, second of the doors, and the vote is taken.
We'll find it anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.